...in 2012, oh four. Twenty-two million, seven-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollar rural school bonds.
Okay, if we could get a motion in a second and we'll get into discussion. Okay, we have, in a second. Okay, now, let's get into a discussion. Commissioner Brinkin, this is another budget finance, if you wanna, and you can start it and then the other commissioners can join in?
And I hope there is a good discussion on this. Of course, this is the second and will be the final leg of the sales tax referendum bond dollars, if it approves tonight. So, the commitment and the finalization of this by this body will release these funds to the school board to execute the final part of, phase one, I guess. Is that right Kenny?
It'll be the final phase.
Okay, and so, everyone I hope has followed publicly or in meetings where the current school board's position on these funds are going. If not, we should ask the school director or the school board chairman to come up and be sure y'all understand where this is currently going for. And then, the other piece of it is certainly how we want to structure the notes, the repayment of it. There's, you know, the repayment of it, and we got our bond counsel here, Mr. C.L. Overman, and I think we, he needs to have the floor. Then we need our budget director to comment on the repayment method. So, I think there are three pieces of information. One, the purpose, where's it gonna go? And secondly, the structuring of the note, so.
Okay, so we want to start with Mr. Castile. Mr. Castile, would you like to come up to the podium, please? Mr. Overman, you're on deck.
Mr. Brinkin, what was your question of me?
The current school board plans, once, if this bond resolution is passed, where the funds currently would be deployed, used.
All right, let me give you the motion that the board made to use these funds. The majority of the board voted to use these funds to build a new middle school on Highway fifty-three using the Caldwell property. The, they also voted in the same motion to use up to five-hundred thousand dollars on the present middle school to renovate it to use as a ninth grade academy. And funding left over would be spread through the other capital projects of our other elementary schools. That suggests of the motion, that is what these, the remainder, remaining of these funds are to be used for according to that motion.
Chairman. The fund components between the middle school, you said five-hundred thousand, how much funds are we projecting for the elementary schools to have available?
Do you have that with you Kenny? You have the information?
I don't have, you mean, how much is it gonna cost to renovate the, the?
Now, how much is it gonna cost to build a middle school? How much are we, you said five-hundred thousand, up to five-hundred thousand for the current middle school, for the academy?
The present cost.
Let me finish, and then how much is each one of the elementary schools actually gonna get?
Virgil, the costs that we've got are in estimates, we don't have drawings at this point. The latest estimate for the middle school project is, it is from twenty-four to twenty-six million. And those are inflated numbers. That's the best I can give you right now because that's the best our architects and construction manager can offer at this time.
I'm gonna be sure the commissioners understand, there's currently three, around four-point-three million?
There's four point, I think it's four-point-eight.
Four-point-eight million dollars of the remain, of the first phase bond resolution is still left there. So, along with that four-point-eight and this two points, twenty-two, whatever the numbers are. I lose my mind a little bit.
Twenty-two, seven, fifty.
It's the funds that will complete this school, capital projects.
Now, the latest figure, I think Rush, was twenty-seven point-nine total, that's what, that is available, that was from C.L.
It looks like about twenty-seven-five, is that what you said?
Twenty-seven point-nine.
Okay. So, that'd be your total that you'll have to spend?
Yeah, twenty-seven million, nine-hundred thousand. That's correct.
Do we have the projected cost of what renovation needs are for the, for the elementary schools?
Virgil, I don't have any cost on those because at this point, we don't know how much money we're gonna have left over. We know that our elementary schools are in, in need of renovation because they are, they are approaching the forty-ninth, fiftieth year, fiftieth year. Now, when we did an estimate in oh-seven, it was estimated that Hillsborough would be six million and the elementary schools would be nine million, but that was a total and complete renovation. But the latest figures, I don't have anything, those are the best figures I've got right now.
How much did Hillsborough end up costing you?
Uh, right at four million.
And it was estimated at six?
Estimated at six, yeah.
And how many do we have left that needs to be renovated?
You have four elementary schools and one middle school.
I'm not against building a new school, but it just seems like that we have so much need presently, we're kinda moving into this, into this process when we're really not taking care of what we currently have. I don't know how good a stewards, how good a stewards we are when we're building new schools when we can't even take care of the ones that we presently got built, when we're have, when we have kids already in these elementary schools that face day-in-to-day-out challenges, such as cafeterias that were built back in the sixties for a hundred-and-twenty-five to a hundred-and-thirty, a hundred-and-thirty, a hundred-and-forty kids, and some of them have more, way more than three-hundred, four-hundred kids on them. So, it's just a challenge to me. I, I know that we have to have a planned growth process and need new schools, we need new schools in several locations. I think the hindsight is, is that we should've been building a long time ago.
Well, we knew when we started with this plan, that it would generate about forty-three million, we knew that it would not be able to take care of all of our needs. Our original plan and what our plan is to completely, was to, what it was designed to do was relieve our overcrowding. And that's, that's, this is the final phase of this, of that plan, to relieve overcrowding at the middle school and at the high school. But we still have other needs.
I've got a quick question on the, on the proposed site. Looking at the proposed site, what improvements will need to be done in order to even service the site, such as utilities, septic, water, and what kind of additional costs are we looking at? Will you? Build do that versus?
All the things that we don't have it, that we'll have to, sewer will have to be run to the property, we'll have to, that's the biggest issue that we'll have. It's, uh, cost estimate on it is about four-hundred to four-hundred-and-fifty thousand to get sewer to the site.
Is there any, with something like that, is there any reoccurring annual costs?
Uh, yes, we have a lift station there, just like we do at the high school. We base those numbers off the high school, that's about a ten to fourteen thousand dollar cost factor every year.
And water service? What kind of water service is there?
Uh, we have water there, that's, I don't think that's, I don't think that's an issue. I believe we, that's not a cost factor. I mean, we'll have to pay for the water, but we'll have to do that anywhere. But I don't, I don't think we have a cost factor on our water service.
Kenny, I believe they put in a six-inch line all the way to New Union, didn't they? When they did the new road.
Okay, commissioners, now's the time to ask him questions while he's up here.
Well, that's true, Ms. Van, but you also have to realize, and I agree with you, the numbers that I gave you are inflated numbers because we don't have a set of working drawings, the architects and the construction management are doing the best they can do on the cost of the building. Uh, there's a good possibility that this may be built for twenty-two million. And we, we would expect to, to be less than what the, we would expect to, build it for less than what the estimated cost is. Just can't give you an accurate number, the best number I've got is what I gave you right now. Procedure is if, if the bond issue passes tonight, then we will be working with the architects to do a topo map and do some soil borings. If that, if that, that is clear, there's not any problems there, then the board will proceed in the purchasing procedure of the property. After that, our architects will start the procedure of doing drawings. And Mr. Duncan, that could be anywhere from six months to nine months. But when those drawings are complete, then we will have an idea of what the cost will be because that will, that will, we will enter to, into the bid process at that time.
I guess a question I've got, Mr. Castile, is looking at, at this, this, I guess, potential site, are there any other alternatives that were explored? And if so, were there any other alternatives that allowed for us to maximize and stretch the taxpayers' dollar as much as possible to get some of these renovations, like what Commissioner Van was speaking about and Commissioner Offe?
There were four sites that the board initially looked at, but this is the one that they selected as a majority.
Reason being, if you don't mind?
I don't have a good reason, I don't have a good answer for that.
Well, I know this is a very sensitive subject for people in audio, but that Caldwell lab was spoken on before the state decided to delay its building towards the next year and now. The thing that bothers me, and I took two different questions, okay, did the state have a right to buy the major Caldwell lab? If they eventually ever wanted to build a high school there, first priority, so, but my thing is, if a year down the road, they come to the point and say, okay, we've got somebody who wants to buy this land, because that was supposed to be, I guess, one of the buildings, right, and we, we have somebody who wants to buy this land, okay, you need to pay us as much money for it if you want one first. And then, there's no way that you can get by this with that land, so it's gonna be a job to, I mean, somebody, someone else, or, you see what I mean? First priority, you saw that land, you don't have the money to buy first on the balance of the land. And I just think that was one of the good things about building that one, was that it could be expanded.
Well, the initial purchase acreage right now is forty acres if the bond passes tonight.
I've got another, another couple of questions, I guess. If the Caldwell site is, is the preferred site, can you give me again the, the cost estimate to be able to build there, just for that site alone?
Uh, twenty-five to twenty-six million, or twenty-four to twenty-six million is the best estimate I've got from our architects at this point.
Okay, and what would be the, as an alternative, building where, or at least expanding and renovating the, the current site? What would that, what's that estimate fall out at?
You mean the estimate to use a middle school site?
Yes, sir.
It was about the same, I don't know if I've got that with me, but it was about the, about the same figures, I think, twenty-six to twenty-four million to do that.
Okay, and the, the difference between those two is, one is just the middle school, but the other is not only, I guess, an academy, but the renovation of the, the current site as well, correct?
Well, the current, the, the middle school plan was, if that was gonna be used, it was to renovate the middle school, that was gonna cost anywhere from ten to fourteen million. And then beside it, there was gonna be a, a construction of a ninth grade academy, athletic fields, it was a total renovation of the whole campus.
Okay, is there, does there happen to be any school board members here who, who could help us understand what makes one more attractive than the other when it, when we're talking about several million dollars and increased spending?
Commissioner, are you wanting to call one up? Is that what you want to do?
If there's anyone here, if there happens to be one here?
Who represents the school board as a school board member?
And the reason why I'm asking is because I, a second ago, Mr. Castile didn't, he said he didn't really have a good answer, and I didn't know if someone could be here that, that may be here, who would have a good answer.
Mr. Chance, I've never supported the Caldwell site, I'm working on behalf of the board, that's my job.
Right, exactly, and, and I understand that, but that's why I was asking if there happened to be someone here who could, I guess, articulate the reason why the, the Caldwell site, or the Caldwell site is, is more attractive and is a better use of taxpayer money at the increased cost versus the other alternatives.
Ms. Esther, are you the chairman?
I am the chair.
Okay, thank you. Would you, would you like to speak to that?
What I will speak to is, not knowing that I was gonna be put on the spot.
Yes, ma'am.
And have to address this, this body. I don't feel comfortable just off the cuff talking, but I will say this much, it was a desire, as any board, when you make a decision, it becomes the, the decision of the full board, not the majority of the board, but the, the board as a whole. So, the decision to buy the Caldwell property is the decision of the Coffee County school system. We're not talking about majority, we're talking about the board. Once a decision is made, then that becomes the decision, that piece of law or policy or the motion becomes the property of the full board, so let me say that upfront. I can't tell you why some voted for it and some voted against it, because I didn't go and ask people why they voted one way or the other. I didn't feel like that was my job. I wanted people to vote, people were to vote as they saw fit. And that's the best answer that I can give you.
That's a good answer, ma'am. Commissioner Chance, do you want to call any other school board? Does any other school board members like to speak to that? I guess not, Commissioner.
And that's fine, like I said, I was just looking for some rationale to justify an increase over one proposal over another. And, and I think that's, I think it's good to have that when we're being asked to approve a bond and looking at different alternatives and one, one in particular being proposed, and it could be almost to the point of not being sufficient to provide what is originally wanted through that, that proposal. So, that's, that's why I was asking, was just to get more clarification. I think it's important that we understand fully why we're being asked to support a site that, that could potentially cost more than the original site.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I guess Kenny, in, in respect to the current site, is there advantages to get the children off of the highly congested area where we have a poor entrance to and from the interstate? And move them to a site that has better controlled access and gets them off of the possibilities for a catastrophic kind of chemical spill with all the stuff going up and down that interstate?
Well, that's been a concern, of course, Mr. Kelly, but the architects are well aware of procedures of trying to move traffic off the roads as efficient as it possibly can. On all the designs they have, that's one of the areas that they're concentrated on.
I guess I'll say from my standpoint, being a Tallahoma person, that anything we can do to get traffic out of the way, make it move better between Tallahoma and the interstate certainly helps the development prospects of my community.
I'll agree.
Commissioner?
I don't know if there's ever a, if anyone ever has the ability to have a one-hundred percent correct, one-hundred percent, yeah, that's the thing we need to do. You know, we, there's always the pros and the cons and thinking of, well, this is the right thing to do at this time, but yeah, let's hold back and look at something else. We, there's no doubt in my mind that we need an additional school. There's no doubt in my mind that we need our elementary schools renovated so that they're up to a standard of service that we can all be proud of as Coffee Canyons. We all know there's a price and there's a dollar tag that goes along with each thing. As far as do I think the Caldwell property would be an okay place to have a school, I think it'd be a great place to have a school. I think the things that concern me, I want to make sure that we have, not that I don't trust our school board, but sometimes when you're so close to a project, sometimes it's like you can't, it's like, we have a saying, it works, sometimes we're, it's the forest and the tree effect, you see the forest, but you can't pick out the maple tree. So, I'd like to know about the things that go along with the middle school, such as football fields, sports, all of these other things. What are our processes and what are, what are our procedures gonna be? And what kind of cost effect is this gonna have? Is that property gonna be laid out in such a way that all of those things are gonna be on that campus? Or, some of those types of things. What types of hidden costs maybe have we not surfaced or looked at? Or have we looked at them and have them all lined up to be taken care of?
Virgil, the cost that I gave you, the twenty-four to twenty-six million, that includes ample parking, that includes softball, baseball, includes soccer, it includes practice football facilities, I think it includes a track, and it's, it's all laid out in a site plan. I think it was in the paper not too long ago, but it's, the architect's done a good job of laying everything out on the sites that you?
Well, I kinda understood that, but I've had phone calls, which you get phone calls, and that's okay, that's why I actually kinda encourage them because it gives me the, the ability to understand what people are requesting, what they want and what they desire for their tax dollars. So, you're telling me that all of those needs are met? Because some of the phone calls, maybe they didn't read the paper because they were interested in the fact that they were gonna have to be busing of the kids back and forth to the present site from that location. I've heard all kinds of different suggestions, one pro and one con. We know all of the other things that go along with these types of sites and the sale of properties, and we know all of that, we've been doing this a long time. We know that that goes along with it. My desire is, is to see that all the schools are taken care of in a proper way. And, you know, I'm, I'm for the Caldwell property, but I'm also for to see that not only the Caldwell property, not only that community is taken care of. I want to see that every community that's represented as far as a taxpayer that's fitting the bill for these things, to also have their, their children adequately taken care of in as far as the education and the type of building that they're being serviced in.
Any other commissioner?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I had a few notes here, just wanted to start saying I think the county commission has primary responsibility to our taxpayers to get the maximum benefits from the limited resources which are available for a school building program. The priority building needs that has been identified by the school board are a new, completely remodeled, renovated middle school or a new middle school for sixth, seventh, and eighth graders. The other priority is a ninth grade academy to alleviate overcrowdings at the high school, and also to address additional space needs they may have there. Third need is to renovate elementary schools, an unknown amount. Therefore, which of the two building site options and concepts are the most responsible use of the taxpayers' money to deal with these three major identified needs? Way I look at the numbers provided by the architects, we got a new middle school with a hundred-and-fifty-five thousand square feet. This is a proposal on the Caldwell site. Require about twenty-five point-eight million, serve sixth, seventh, and eighth grade students. And you got additional cost of about five-hundred thousand for sewer, four-hundred-and-eighty-thousand for land, about forty thousand for a school zone. This will require about twenty-six point-nine million of the twenty-seven million roughly available, and only addresses one of the three identified needs. Additional costs will be incurred for three-phase electrical power, costs associated with athletic fields, yearly additional costs for transportation, and sewer maintenance. Okay, at the existing middle school site, you would have a completely renovated and expanded middle school with a hundred-and-sixty-one thousand square feet, require fourteen point-four million, and serve sixth, seventh, and eighth grade students. Also, you would have a new ninth grade academy with seventy-five thousand square feet, serving an additional five-hundred-plus ninth grade students, and require twelve point-nine million with additional cost of two-hundred-and-twenty-five thousand for land. This will require about twenty-seven point-five million, and addresses two of the three major identified needs, and serves an additional five-hundred-plus students, as opposed to the Caldwell site. In summary, should the county commission release the remaining twenty-seven million for an option which addresses one of the three major needs, or an option which addresses two of the three major needs, which do you feel is the most financially responsible decision? Also, if all of the funds are used for the Caldwell property site, where are the funds needed for the ninth grade academy and a renovated existing middle school, and renovations for elementary schools? My question is, where are those funds gonna come from? Where is this commission gonna get those additional funds?
Bobby, I'd like to respond to part of that, being a Tallahoma, and the fact that we're investing in an industrial park, that we're adding, how many more students did you say are going into that site with your, with your figures, the current site?
With the ninth grade site?
Yes, sir.
About five hundred.
So, we're gonna add about, what's that, equivalent in terms, twenty-five, thirty percent more people going into the, to the existing middle school? And we have businesses who have elected not to bring their business into our community because of the difficulty of getting to the interstate. I want to reduce that in order to get business in here. You may be looking at one end of the cost, but you're also looking at losing tax revenue and development in this community. The other comment I'd make on it, we're a brilliant commission and we've elected that we need to buy a, a new site to build a jail, and at the same time, we're questioning whether the school board's doing the wise thing and buying a new site to build a school. I'm not sure we're that much smarter than they are, they're that much dumber for us for doing the same thing. But the, the fact is, the more obstacles I put in between Tallahoma and this joint industrial park to getting to the interstate is more deterrent for me to get business in this community.
Any other commissioners?
Mr. Mayor, would you elaborate a little bit on how this is gonna be funded, this bond issue, this twenty-two million, seven-hundred-and-fifty thousand? Where is the source of the money to do this?
C.L., we'll just let C.L. do that. Did you hear Mr. Bryan's question?
I believe you'll find it in the bond document, won't you, Mr. Overman?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. County Commissioner, it's always good to be with y'all. Mr. Mayor, should I give a little background first on the resolutions and such and so on?
You should, you do?
And then I'll respond to Mr. Bryan's question.
Okay.
With the best I can. At the direction of the budget, and finally, I'm sorry, I'm C.L. Overman with Morgan Keegan in Knoxville, it's been my pleasure to work with Coffee County for about a decade now on these various projects. projects. At the direction of the budget and finance committee a couple of weeks ago, we directed Bass, Berry, and Sims, who is your bond counsel in Nashville, to prepare the resolution that's before you. What that resolution would provide for is competitive bids. In other words, this bond issue, either in one or more issues, and the odds are you'd end up probably doing two issues on this particular financing just to fit with the timing of the construction if you choose to move ahead. These bonds would be competitively bid in, in the national bond market. The interest rate environment currently is attractive. We have dropped the budget fixed interest rate from five to four and a half percent. Frankly, we think you'd do better than that if we do move ahead with a portion of the financing in the not-too-distant future. The resolution does authorize the mayor and the budget and finance director working with budget and finance committee to make the final decisions on when exactly to issue these bonds. And that frankly will be a balancing act that we've had discussions in budget and finance committee about. We, we know interest rates are good currently. Fixed interest rates are still at historic lows in spite of the fact that those interest rates are so low, there's still great demand for municipal bonds out there in the municipal bond market. But the balancing act is the difference between locking in a good, low interest rate in known interest rate environment and yet not issuing your bonds too early. But what this resolution does do is authorize up to the 22,750, which would give the schools a total of 43 million over the last several bond issues. This particular bond issue is projected to provide 27.38. That includes new bond monies as well as fund balance that Kenny made reference to earlier. To answer the commissioner's question just a minute ago, the funding does come from the 3/4% sales tax increase that was put into place several years ago. It also relies on existing rural school pennies that are in the existing budget and as other old debt rolls off, those pennies that are there in place now would be available to continue to support rural school debt. And then there are some senior high funds out about 2028 that if those pennies are rolled, that helps support this. That's, that's a small part of the overall funding. So, Commissioner, it's a, it's a combination of sales tax, which was increased for this very purpose, and existing pennies that are in your budget now. No new property taxes are in this. And that's the summary of the resolution. If there's any questions, I can try to answer, I'll be glad to.
Can I ask a question on, and this really, I guess I'm going to ask budget and finance, but this is part of the tax increase that we had funded previously, is that correct? The, the revenue bonds that had been previously, well, we had previously discussed it as approving part of the go-ahead to look at the school plan was to, to plan for this tax increase? Yeah, the 11 cents that are coming in?
No, 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 no.
No, it's in time.
Nothing to do with that.
Rush.
That, let's literally mark back up. This is strictly using the money that's from the bond referendum of 2009 there?
Yes. There were actually, there were actually three issues, seven, eight, and nine portions that went, of which went to the schools. About 20 million, they spent about 16 and therefore there's a, there's a balance.
But the, the funding source is primarily the sales tax pennies. But as he pointed out, we've, the, the existing school debt is funded by rural property tax pennies that if you look at the county's bond repayment, those bonds will be paying off and, and those pennies are, they're going to be committed to this bond resolution. So, this is, if I'm saying it right?
You are.
This is basically without, for 25 years, with, we are locked in with the current sales tax and the current property taxes. On the upside, we could get tremendous sales tax growth that would provide more pennies that might provide dollars or property tax coming on stream. But if those two things don't happen, any future capital projects that are needed by this county for the school system could only be funded with additional property tax pennies. So.
Can I continue?
Yes, go ahead.
Just for a second. Commissioner, to follow up on your question, what we've tried to be is very conservative in these projections by budgeting initially 5% and now 4.5%. Feeling good about doing better than that. On the other hand, this is not about feeling good, it's about trying to make common sense, conservative projections. So, we, we feel good about the market right now and hopefully for the rest of this year, but when it came to interest rate projections, we've been very conservative. So, the, the basic plan of sales tax plus existing pennies in your budget now and as, as existing debt rolls off in 2017 and 2028, leaving those pennies in place, we, we feel from the conservative approach we've taken to these projections that that plan has worked and will, will work for you. Yes, sir.
Certainly, we, while we have C.L. up here, we need to talk a little bit because this, this bond resolution or the, I guess the intent, and C.L., and Mariana, can you join me on this? Because the issue dealing with, do we have this bond issue resolution committed to be what I call delayed principal repayments in order to, to level the, the revenue stream with the existing debt versus a normal principal amortizing repayment debt there? Mariana, just before the meeting, just maybe aware that either in our, is that bond?
Debt policy.
Debt policy, that the commission's position is that we will only have straight amortization of, of principal on, on these bonds. So, can you help us out without delaying this?
First of all, the, the normal, if there's any normal in the world anymore, the normal way counties issue their bonds is not level debt. Typically, that's just close to impossible. What we have done is, we think a common sense structuring of these bonds, the county's already, we think, made an intelligent move on the first 20 million by lock, locking in the very long maturities of your school financing back when the Build America bonds were available. And that way, we could lock in and basically get a subsidized rate for you. So, the, the 2038 and beyond bonds have been locked in for the duration and, and what we left in the structuring plan was room to issue these bonds if you elect to do that. And because these bonds will have a shorter maturity time, the interest rate will be lower because the high, the farther out you go, the higher the interest rate averages. So, we think, frankly, we'll recommend you amend that policy because level debt, you'll never get there because you can't, you certainly can't use the sales tax plus existing rural school and senior high pennies to, to fund level debt because you'll be paying, your debt service payments will greatly exceed what your revenues are. So, yes, you've structured, you'd be structuring your debt to some degree, but that, number one, that's a necessity virtually all counties have to use. And number two, you're locking in those rates in a historic low interest rate environment so that, that negates some of the negative impact of structuring your debt.
She just presented me with something that I certainly just haven't been able to reconcile. I understand what you're coming from, C.L., and normally, but I certainly, if, if we have taken a, a position on, on structuring something that we have a policy that we said we wouldn't do, we need to be aware of it.
Yeah.
So, Mariana, can you help?
I, I went and looked at it and split it up as level debt and looked at all our commitments we have now and this 20 million. And I had it structured to where we could do it. It's about $500,000 more a year in bond payments, but we do have a significant amount of fund balance we've accumulated because we haven't, you know, we haven't sold all our bonds yet. So, I gave that to Rush to look at and, you know, it's my recommendation that we look at this straight line debt. I think it can be done and I've shown it to Rush and we need to look at that. It does save quite a bit of money. According to my estimates, it's $4 million over the life of the bond.
Obviously, this is probably certainly a debate and discussion that probably should have been flushed out at, at a budget finance.
We didn't get the CT form until, you know, we had to get the bond resolution. That's why you didn't get it in budget and finance that night. We didn't get it, I believe it was like Wednesday. Roxanne needed to get the resolution out to mail the agenda.
Well, you know, because, I mean, what she just presented to me has a potential of, over the term of 30 or 40 years to be, you know, a three or $4 million savings in, in structuring the debt. Now, in this bond resolution, C.L., I don't know if we can proceed with a motion, yea or nay, on the bond resolution and work out the structuring by authorization later or not?
The bond resolution provides the mayor and whoever else you want to make those decisions, to make the final decisions on the bond structure. So, that's not, the, the structuring is typically based on what the market looks at it like at the time. And I'll be honest with you, it's the first I've heard about trying to do level debt. If that's possible, I'd love to look at those numbers and we'll be glad to run them too and see if we think that's doable within your revenue. We've, we've never discussed that possibility till tonight, so I, I can't answer that on the spot.
And I would hate to be locked in if this bond resolution locks us into the structure.
The resolution reads two ways. Number one, the, the primary county officials have the authority to make the final structuring decisions, which is what we're talking about here, and that's totally normal. That's the way bond resolutions are done so that we've all got total flexibility as we move toward going to the market. There's another point there and I, I'm having a senior moment. It may very well be that you can do level debt, that we need to look at those numbers and see. Oh, the, the other thing, the verbiage, here it is, the verbiage that's in the resolution provides you to go either way on your, it says if the county commission decides to change that policy, that's fine, it worked, or if you decide to leave it there, you can do level debt. Just standing here cold without having had a discussion on level debt, I don't think it would work. Now, I, I, we'll talk. That, that's correct.
I had a budget and finance meeting.
And that's fine, but the resolution provides you the ability to do all that. You do. Well, I mean, Mariana can confirm this, the, the bond counsel understood the challenges that were up against. Yeah.
Mr. Chairman?
So, so she put that into the resolution to make sure that.
It's on page, um, page 16 of the bond resolution.
If, if there's any way to level out the, the debt structure and save you some interest money, we'll be the first ones to tell you that. Starting off with level debt though, right up front is going to be a challenge. But, you know, we need to look at the numbers Mariana had and we'll.
Okay, Commissioner Offord, then Commissioner Chance.
I, I guess one question for Mr. Bricken is the statement that you made, this is something we need to work out.
Hold on a minute, he's getting a call. Go ahead and do that again.
Okay, Mr. Bricken. I, I guess the question that I would have from hearing the statement that you just made is for us, this is not something we really would work out here, it's something we'd work out at a committee setting. Are, are you saying there's something within the structure that's been brought to us that, from the details of the document or the instrument that has not been worked out that certainly needs to be looked at before it's entertained? What is that?
Well, you know, I, again, I think what I'm hearing is that we can adopt this resolution and take back the money, the cost on repayment structure, that if we can fund it under a serious level of debt, possibly over the course of the bond issue, say 30 million is the dollar, certainly we need to, certainly look at that. And all that will do certainly is allow somehow down below 20 years from now, the money for, for some student programs. So, if we can do that, we certainly need to, to look at it.
Mr. Mayor, does that need to be in the form of an amendment to the document?
No, I think it's already in the document. It's already in there.
So, are we saying that it's covered?
Yes.
Because I'm hearing from what he's saying that they need to go back to committee with it.
Well, he's talking about on the.
I think the organization allows Mariana and the mayor, but I think Mariana, the mayor would bring it back.
Right. That's what it says in the document.
I understand, but I, when I hear that statement, I just want to make sure that there's not something that's been left out that's not, needs to be entered into the document to cover the document needs.
It's in there, Commissioner.
The resolution covers all those eventual.
It's that unknown that's out there kind of dangling in the surface.
It's not really an unknown, it's, in all honesty, this is the first time we've discussed trying to do level debt, so yeah, that, that needs to be discussed.
It's just a particular.
That is, that is kind of an unknown because if we haven't discussed it, it becomes an unknown.
Well.
Or at least something that's not been looked at.
That's, that's something that budget and finance can look at and it's just another way to finance the project and that's, and, and we're going to take a look at it through budget and finance. Commissioner Chance?
I take it that we're, we're getting close to wrapping up on this discussion and, and going forward with the vote, but I wanted to, I want to make note of a few things. Number one, I don't have any preference towards any particular site, never have and, and still don't at this, at this time. I'm not against building any, any kind of new schools or anything like that. I believe that we, we should provide the best that we possibly can for, for all of our children. But I want to echo what Commissioner Bryan had to say about some of the, the things that, the, the points that will not, and most likely will not be resolved if we move forward with this particular bond resolution and the, the particular site that's being examined right now. And I understand it as being one of my, my jobs is to make sure that, that we deliver the, the most product for the dollar for the taxpayers. And as it stands right now, with this particular option on the table, we may not be able to do, to do that. So, having said that, I want it to be clear and without any ambiguity as to why I'm going to vote against this bond resolution.
May I make a comment?
You sure can, Commissioner.
As we said in these hearings, that we've been going through this for years now and if we don't do something, we'll still be looking back on it several years. They're very clear, there is not enough in the funding of these bonds to do everything we want to do. We have to start somewhere. The elementary schools certainly need the attention, but we're going to have to come up with another funding mechanism to be able to build those new schools. And as you said, five of the six schools were built about 50 years ago within a two-year, three-year time period. They're getting old, they're falling apart in places, they have sewer problems, they're inadequate. Everyone understands that. The other portion of this is the elementary school children will have the occasion as they go all the way through the system to go to a new middle school and adequate, at least safe academy and a high school that is not overcrowded. The original plan that was put together years ago called for roughly a quarter of a billion dollars, which was well beyond the means of this county to support. We've talked about it long enough, we need to do something. We've had so many hearings, so many ways of funding it, from real taxes to property taxes to the redoing, there is something in the legislative sessions now to readdress the distribution of the sales tax, which would, the second half portion that would help the county. But all that aside. But all that aside, we've got to do with what we have, and I think to not move ahead with this would be a disservice to the citizens, and more of a disservice to the children. And I vote, would be voting in favor of this.
Any other discussion? Commissioner?
The school board has been looking at all these properties for a number of years, as we have, and I will have to give them honor of their decision to do what they're doing, because I feel like that they've looked at all the options and come up with this conclusion. What's before us is whether or not we're going to fund it. That's the only question before us, not to tell them how to do their job.
Any other comments? Commissioner Bricken?
I just, again, just a little bit of just follow-up. This is a funding issue, not a location issue. Again, and I really think that is our role, is just, is the deployment of the county's funds is, are going to be, are best looked at, our fiduciary responsibility there. And that's where it should be. Again, you know, every, it really is not intended to second-guess the school board. It's sitting there saying, if they present a budget request that will serve long-term, so two years from there, we're not blindsided with an unfunded something else. So those are the things that we have to, I mean, this is a 30-year commitment, and I said, we don't have any latitude without having some real luck on sales tax growth or property tax assessments for any other project. So we're shooting our last major, it's not a bullet, it's a cannonball, okay?
You're right.
Question?
Question's been called.
Mr. Overman? You know, the first question was asked before you got into some good discussion here, was the source of payment.
Yes.
I believe, look on page eight in the document.
I know, but he-
On page eight in the document.
Okay. Go ahead, Mr. Overman.
Where we ask about the source of payment. Read the first sentence in, down in section four on page eight, as to the source of payment.
Which document are you talking about, Commissioner?
The bond.
The resolution?
Yeah. Page eight. Your first page eight.
Okay.
Source of payment.
Well, Commissioner, this is typical language that the bond counsel would put in there, basically what it says, the bond should be payable from unlimited ad valorem taxes levied on taxable property within the county line outside the territorial limits of the cities. The bond, the key to this is, the bonds are additionally payable from and secured by sales taxes, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. So that's, these are rural school bonds of the county, and if, like we've discussed here, if these other revenue sources fail, yeah, it goes back on the rural property tax, but nobody's going to buy your bonds unless that says that.
Right. I understand that. I understand that completely. And the point I want to make, it's payable from taxable property within the county lying outside the cities of Manchester and Telahoma. If the sales tax is not sufficient to deal with this, then rural-only people will be taxed on property tax to pay this. And I just want to make that point.
And all due respect, that's nothing new. I mean-
Oh, it's nothing new.
Now, we've known that all along, that's just the way that-
And we've endured it for several years, so I mean, we're used to that process.
The key to it is the phrase that says additionally payable. That's-
I understand, but any property tax would be on property, rural property only, outside the cities of Manchester and Telahoma. Correct.
Which is funding rural schools for rural kids. Right. Go ahead, Commissioner Bricken, go ahead.
And I'm not sure if it's close to calling the question on it, but-
Well, it has been, but I have the right of the chairman to let you speak.
But I would like, because of what Mr. Bryan just said, I would like a roll-call vote, starting with the rural commissioners on this issue.
Okay. Okay, so we're going, hold on just a second. Okay, we're going to do a roll-call vote, starting with the rural commissioners.
Mr. Mayor, before you do that, I guess I'd add one comment on what you just said.
Go ahead.
Under my understanding of Robert's rules, even if the question is called, it doesn't have to be observed, as long as there are current discussions underway, they may continue.
You are exactly right, and as chairman, I make that call, and I did. You're right. Because I want all the information that we can get before we make this decision. We're not going to rush into this. You have one more? You okay? Just get ready, Tricia, and I'll tell you when.
You know, this is, you know, just like Bobby and several rest of you, other commissioners, I've been on the commission for a long time, and I've always tried to use a conservative aspect, a conservative means toward my vote, and try to think through what's best for the county and the best way to spend the tax dollar. I don't know of any other process or means to do this, other than what we're doing. I do want to thank the school board for the efforts that they've done with this. I mean, sometimes we look at it, and we examine it, and go back through it, and think, well, it should have been done this way or that way, but it's not an easy job, and as this is. But we know, just as fellow commissioners said a while ago, if we don't move forward with this, we're going to be right where we're at, and the kids of this county are going to continue to be overcrowded, and so we do have to start somewhere.
Okay. We're going to do the roll-call vote, and if you vote yes, then you're voting to do it. We're going to start with the rural first. We're ready.
No.
Janet Phan, no. Erie Chance-
No.
Carrie Farah-
Yes.
Lee Duskit-
Yes.
Virgil Alford-
Yes.
Mary Wiz-
Yes.
Tim Morris-
Yes.
Rini Bell-
Yes.
Wendell Norton-
Yes.
Mark Kelly-
Yes.
Robin Hines-
Yes.
Jimmy Bradford-
Yes.
Myra Patton- Jackie Duncan- Christopher Berg-
Yes.
Chris Bricken-
Yes.
Lauren Walker-
No.
Stephen Jones-
No.
Wilma Thomas-
Yes.
Ann Friesen-
Yes.
Anybody want to change their vote?
Did you hear her? She said, does anyone want to change their vote? If not, whenever you get a chance, let's have the count.
15 yes, 6 no.
Okay, it passes. Did everybody hear that, 15 yes, 6 no?